Thank you, all right. Good evening. I'd like to call the Litchfield Zoning Board Adjustment Meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. Meeting date is June 19th. We will do vocal attendance. So would you?
John Deveraux, member.
Laurie Gandia, member.
Jerry Sorensen, member.
Jeff Blackwell, building inspector.
All other members are absent. We do have two cases on the agenda tonight. We only have three members returning to Hollis, and as you are well aware, you need all three of us to vote in the affirmative in order to pass an application. Would you like to proceed?
Yes, we would.
So, the first case that we have is case number 06192023-1. Special exception from LZO Article 1200, Wetlands Conservation District, Section 1208, to construct streets, roads, and other accessways in utility right-of-way easements within the Wetland Conservation District. Name of applicant, 255 Dairy Road LLC. Owner of property, 255 Dairy Road LLC. Location of the property, 255 Dairy Road, Litchfield, New Hampshire, map 2, lot 8. Hollis, will you be, if you'll find it easier to present this together, or are you going to do one by one? Just for the presentation file? If you are, then I was going to...
I think it'll be sort of a combination, Madam Chair. I think we'll give a little general introduction to the site and then probably not repeat that for the second one, but I would guess the board would be more comfortable proceeding on one special exception, making the decision and then, or maybe holding the decision and then proceeding, just because the criteria is so different.
So I'm just going to read the second case into the record as well.
Great.
So, case number 06192023-2. Special exception from LZO Article 1100, Floodplain Conservation District, Section 1103.00A, for the erection of a new residential building and structures and the alteration of the surface configuration of land within the Wetland Conservation District. Again, owner and applicant, 255 Dairy Road LLC. Location of property, 255 Dairy Road, Litchfield, New Hampshire, map 2, lot 8. And if you could just introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Goddessman &amp; Hollis at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua, and I'm here this evening representing the owner of the property and the applicant, 255 Dairy Road LLC. Manager of the LLC is here this evening, Richard Charbonneau, and we're requesting, as the Chair read in, two separate special exceptions. Both of these, as you well know, are somewhat technical rather than use. There are a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. So what I'm going to do is introduce the project briefly, and then with me this evening, I have Jim Petropolis of Hayner Swanson, who is the project engineer, and Jim will come in, describe the site, and describe the particulars of why we're here this evening for application, and then I'll finish up and address the, in each of the two special exceptions, there are a number of criteria we have to satisfy, and I will attempt to, after Jim presents, summarize how we've met the criteria. Also this evening with us is Robert Carter of H.L. Turner Group. He's here really for the floodway analysis. He did prepare a letter and send it in. I believe you, for the first special exception, you have a letter from GOV Environmental, Brendan Quigley. Mr. Quigley was unable to make tonight's hearing due to other engagement, but I think you have a letter from him that's in the packet or was presented anyway and put on-site. It looks like, and I'm happy, I have that, copy of that letter, so I'll introduce it to the Chair at the time. So, as I say, I'll let Jim do the introduction of the proposed development and its impacts. The first one that we're going to proceed under is the Wetlands Conservation District special exception. A Wetlands Conservation District is described under Section 1200 of the Litchfield Zoning Ordinance, and what we have, we have is a proposed development of the BAE System Project. If you're familiar with it out there, you go by it for years, you've gone by it, it's behind fence, nobody really knows what goes on back there unless you work there, you couldn't even get on-site, and they decided after all these years to sell it, and my client, 255, has decided to purchase it and is proposing to develop the property into multifamily residential units. So in evaluating the property, the engineers and the consultants looked at it and discovered a series of two brooks that crossed the property, and therefore, in order to access the land, we're going to be involved with some wetland crossings. There are three areas of wetland crossings you'll hear Jim describe, and as a result of controlling the stormwater management on-site, there'll also be a number of areas within the buffer that we will impact with these stormwater management facilities, and you'll hear Jim describe those as well. The uses are permitted under Section 1208 if the Zoning Board of Adjustment grants special exceptions. The two uses where, which are allowed are the accessways and utility easement ways, and by utilities, we're talking about stormwater management, either basins or headwalls or things like that. In order to come before this board, the requirement is we first have to refer to the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Health Officer for any comments they may have. We did, in fact, go to both the Planning Board, Planning Board on May 2nd, and I have a copy of the minutes here that I'll introduce into the record, and the minutes reflect that after listening to us and discussing it, motion was made that the Planning Board would not be making a comment to the ZBA and would defer to the Conservation Commission. So that's the Planning Board's decision, and I'll hand that over in a second. And we also went to the Conservation Commission on June 1, and I have a letter addressed from Jason Brennan to the Litchfield Zoning Board of Adjustment, which says, "Upon review and discussion, the Conservation Commission has no objections to the special exception request, but offers the following suggestion. Mark key non-disturbed areas prior to construction. Consider having the developer mark 'non-disturbed,' in quotes, areas, 50-foot wetlands buffers that are in close proximity to construction activities to ensure that these areas are not accidentally disturbed during construction." As I said, we're not proposing to put any of our structures within the wetland buffer or in any wetlands. The wetlands activity is limited to the three crossings, one of which exists and is being upgraded, another which exists slightly down or upstream, I forget which it is, but nearby, and it's being upgraded, and a third is to access land which my client owns, which is otherwise not accessible without this small crossing. So we have met the necessary threshold of going to those three boards. In addition to comments from the boards, you all have to determine whether we meet the criteria of Section 1200.01 and Section 1208.01. 1200.01, and I'm stating this upfront so everybody will have in their mind when they listen to Jim, prevent development which may contribute to pollution. You will hear, "We do not contribute in any way to pollution. In fact, our improvements will assist in controlling any runoff from existing roadways out there." Will not prevent destruction of or significant change, it is supposed to prevent destruction of or significant changes to natural wetlands. As you will hear, we do not have any destruction or significant changes planned. You must protect unique ecologically sensitive and unusual natural areas. As you will hear, we are protecting, we're not going into the one area that Jim will point out that's somewhat ecologically and environmentally sensitive. Must protect wildlife habitat corridors and maintain ecological balances. As you'll hear, we're also doing that, and the letter makes it quite clear that we're not threatening any habitat corridors. Protect water supplies in existing aquifers, recharge areas. We have no impact, the detention basins are all infiltrating and containing the water on-site, it's not directing it off-site. Must prevent expenditures of municipal funds that might be necessary if there were to be a misuse of the wetlands resulting from this special exception authorization. We are just improving or replacing existing facilities in the wetlands, and best management practices are now an upgrade from what was out there 25 to 50 years ago. And then finally, encourage low-intensity uses that are harmonious, appropriate, and safely located near the wetlands. We're not, we're not going in the buffers for any structures whatsoever. So those are the beginning criteria, and then when Jim finishes, I'll cover the eight or nine criteria that are very specific to what's being proposed that will have to be met. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Morgan. Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer at Hayner Swanson, Inc., doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. And as Morgan said, I'm really here to present the facts of this particular project to you and to a number of the abutters that are with us this evening. BAE has occupied the site since the late 1970s. As you can see on the aerial that was submitted as part of the application, there's a number of buildings and inflatable domes upon the property. Several years ago, apparently, they made a decision to move out of this facility, and our client purchased this property in 2022. The actual address is 255 Dairy Road. It is a 90-acre property in total. We have Dairy Road here as our frontage and our access in the western part of the site. We're bordered to the north behind Lobster Boat and Irwin Marine. The property's got some jagged edges. We creep into Hudson, there's 10 acres of land in Hudson, and it's abutted by several commercial uses just south of that Hudson wing. We wrap around and cross the border back into Litchfield. There's a number of residential properties right in this location here, larger lots to the south, and then a little bit of a subdivision here. In fact, the DOT actually purchased some land, I think this parcel right here is part of the circumferential a number of years ago. This property is located in the highway commercial zone, but it's also in the multifamily overlay district. As you can see on the photo, it's, has been partially developed. I think when BAE came in, you can see all the open areas in the front, in the central body of the site here, and also located in through here, and that's where they contain their current operation. So you'll see it's a combination wooded areas as well as open areas. The topography is very favorable, it's, it's very subtle topography through the site. One of the first things we had done with the property is we had the wetlands mapped in spring by GOV Environmental Services, a very well-respected environmental firm, and they found on the property really two complexes of wetlands. The first in the southern part of the site is kind of an intermittent stream that weaves its way into a wetland, and it kind of works in some awkward dimensions, awkward directions, but it crosses an existing culvert here, works its way around, crosses here, comes back, and eventually crosses Dairy Road about here. That's the first complex, and it's the larger of the two complexes on the property. The second one is more of a perennial stream that comes really from the Litchfield-Hudson line, and it works its way in a northerly fashion into a larger off-site complex here, and those two wetlands meet together off-site and they form Chase Brook, which is located in the center, the southern central part of...
Can you identify the blue thing that is not wetland and that is floodway?
Yep. There are no vernal pools associated with the wetlands. We typically do that in May, so there's no vernal pools. And with it, comes with it a, all these wetlands are 50-foot, no-disturbed buffer, a 75-foot building setback, and a 100-foot leach field setback. The blue foot-like color and shape that you see there is not wetland, it is the limits of the flood zone, and I'll talk a little bit about that in my presentation and giving you some of the facts about what that's all about, but that's not wetland. If you look closely at the map, you can see the wetlands are fairly tight in throughout, in throughout the project. As Morgan said, it's being proposed to construct a 172-unit multifamily residential development, a townhouse project. 200 units are allowed by your code, so we're approximately 28 units less than what's allowed. In designing, in deciding how to design the property, our client, Rick Charbonneau, really had several goals in mind. He wanted to mimic the project, the successful project that he built off of Page Road, Cala Wa Circle. He also wanted to do that in regards to layout and style. These are six townhouses, six-unit buildings, townhouse-style buildings with parking, private roads, private utilities. We also wanted to minimize the amount of clearing that it would take on the property, and if we were to overlay the development on the aerial photo, you would see that the bulk of the units here and here are within those cleared areas. The only real area that we're going into forests is in the extreme southerly part of the site where we're extending a road for 12 units located along the southerly portion of the property. The main access is off the current access that you see with the BAE Systems Site on 102. Again, serviced by private utilities, we have water by Penachuk Water Works, septic systems for each building. In case you're wondering about Hudson, we're not proposing any residential development in Hudson, but we thought it would be a good area to have an outdoor storage. Many residents have the ability to have a boat or a skidoo or a piece of equipment that they would like to store outdoors. We're going to fence in a small area here, as well as some outdoor storage units for the residents only, in an outdoor rec space in Hudson. Morgan mentioned about stormwater. I'll talk a little bit about that. We hope to collect and gather our stormwater with curbing and catch basins, and then throughout this, this 80-acre development, we've got a combination of infiltration trenches, leech and catch basins, infiltration basins. We have a couple of wetlands we're constructing to service stormwater attenuation as well as, as well as a pond located in this location here. So there's a number of practices. We're trying to take advantage of those good sandy soils that are available on the site to properly attenuate and treat post-constructed stormwater wetland. Many of the edges of these stormwater practices are adjacent to buffers. Morgan represented, we have no less than 11 buffer areas, but they're mostly already areas that have been previously cleared by the, by the BAE Systems Development. Those stormwater wetlands, we'll have a more naturalized look to them, but we won't have the golf course pond right down to the edge. Conservation Commissions like seeing plantings really in that transition, which has a winterberry, highbush, blueberry, and silky dogwood or some of the, some of the transitional plants we'll be using. It gives it a more naturalized look, but it actually gives it a better buffer than what currently exists there today. So there are three impact areas on the site. I'll walk you through those. The first one is a very small culvert improvement right here. It's under the existing road, and because of the construction of that, we're going to improve the outlet of that, and it impacts about 125 square feet of wetland, about a, about a 12-by-12 or 12-by-10-foot area on the outlet of that culvert. The second impact area is the crossing of the perennial stream, and what we're proposing there is an open bottom culvert, a 6-foot-by-12-foot open bottom culvert. It's much wider and bigger opening than it needs to be, but we like using that on perennial streams. It has less of an impact to the natural bottom of the stream course itself. It allows the passing of larger animals, if that is used as wildlife quarter, like we expect it would be. And then there'll be that prisma fill on the approaches to and from. That impact area measures 2,380 square feet. And then lastly is a crossing here to get to that newly constructed area of development to the south, and this will be your more traditional culvert. It's an 18-inch RCP pipe set up about 10 feet, and it'll have that prisma fill working down on both sides. That wetland crossing actually will be replacing an existing old, out-of-date, kind of decrepit old culvert right here. So we're going to pull that out of there, and that becomes a buffer impact to construct this newer, better wetland crossing. That measures 6,635 square feet. So in total, we have 9,140 square feet of wetland impact. That does put us before the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for a wetland permit. We have made that permit application, and it'll be pending as we work through the approval process. The 11 buffer areas are in yellow. I know it's difficult to see on this, but you could refer to the submitted material. We've identified each buffer area, and they're mostly associated with the entrance drive coming in. Because there's wetlands on both sides, we're improving that. We've got a stormwater area here that's out in the open area that I discussed. We have impacts to buffers to our stormwater areas here, here, and impacts to the crossing in stormwater areas here. So we've really tried to minimize those as best we can. The majority of those are within open areas. We do have an impact up near the entrance for a bus drop-off and a mailbox, central mailbox for the entire complex. In terms of the overall project, this property contains, you know, about 16, almost 17 acres of wetlands, and so with a 9,000-square-foot impact, if you do the math, it's about 1.2% being impacted. Overall, the project will have 84% open space, and again, I want to reinforce Morgan, comment Morgan made, that these impacts are really for roadway and utility access, both in improvement to an infrastructure here, for access to this upland here, and for access to this upland here. That represents the presentation on the wetlands and buffers. I can put a pause here, Morgan, and ask the zoning board members if they have any questions?
Can you describe the first impact on the crossing? You described that you improved it, but I didn't get any sense of what the details were for...
This one right here, sir? Yeah, there's an old, I think 15-inch culvert there that's been there for 50 years, and it's just, it's, it's, it needs to be removed to create this, this improved intersection at that location for our development. We have a little bit wider pavement, and so we felt we would just replace the entire culvert. And in doing so, the downstream end of it, we're putting a head wall where there is no head wall, because we like the stability of a head wall at the end of a drainage system like that. And the 125 square feet is simply to put the riprap outlet at the, at the end of that head wall.
So are you putting the same size culvert in what existed?
Just a new one. Same size, same intent, same integrity. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just a comment you made about sandy soils, so I'm assuming you've done the percolation tests and stuff, and you're fairly confident that, that you'll be retention and you'll be percolating?
Yeah. If I may, sir, for both our stormwater practices and also our septic, we wanted to ensure that what we were presenting to all the various boards, you know, meets the design criteria, and so we've got a big honking drainage study. You're welcome to read it.
Oh, I read it, no, no.
But yes, you're correct.
I just want, yeah, so you've done that already, you've done the perk tests, and so you're fairly confident...
Oh, yes, sir.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, in those areas, we found good soils, we said, "Let's do recharge." In those areas where we didn't find good soils, for instance, in this area here, we had some high groundwater, we said, "Let's, let's make a stormwater pond," and so that's where we'll have open water, which are nice in apartment-type complexes like that. And so we kind of did what the land told us to do.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to summarize for folks listening at home. So we have three areas of impacts to the wetland totaling 9,140 square feet, and then we have 11 areas of impact to the buffer totaling 83,530 square feet.
So I think, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would just kind of move to the criteria, which is under Section 1208.01 of your ordinance. Before I do that, I'm just going to submit these, the minutes, the planning board meeting, and the letter of the Conservation Commission. I think that they're posted in the packet in the, on the site anyway, but at least...
We do have a letter from Planning Board, Chairman of the Planning Board stating his...
Oh, you do have a letter from them?
Yes.
Okay, I hadn't seen one, so...
Right, yeah. I just got it.
Oh, okay, good.
And if you wouldn't mind, I'm just going to read these into the record?
Yes.
So we have a letter, an email from Michael Croto dated June 19th. Dear Chairman Gandia and members of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, on May 2nd, 2023, the Litchfield Planning Board reviewed the special exception regarding the proposed development at 255 Dairy Road. The Board voted 5-0-0 to not comment on this application for special exceptions to the wetlands and deferred to the comments made by the Litchfield Conservation Commission. Thank you for allowing the Planning Board to comment on this special exception application. Sincerely, Michael R. Croto, Chair, Litchfield Planning Board. Then I am just going to read in the one from the Litchfield Conservation Commission. That's dated June 6, 2023, addressed to the Litchfield Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Litchfield Conservation Commission reviewed a wetland special exception request by 255 Dairy Road LLC during our June 1, 2023 meeting. The special exception is being requested to support the construction of a 172-unit multifamily residential development at 255 Dairy Road, map 2, lot 8. The site is 90 acres in size, and the total impact includes approximately 9,140 square feet of wetlands impact and approximately 83,530 square feet of wetlands buffer impact. In addition, site improvements are also being requested within the FEMA Flood A Zone. The Conservation Commission completed a site work of the property, reviewed project documents and maps, completed research, and had an extensive discussion with the developer regarding wetlands and the wetland buffer impacts. In addition, the Commission evaluated projects to the FEMA Flood Zone A and reviewed the associated study completed by the H.L. Turner Group. Upon review and discussion, the Conservation Commission has no objections to this special exception request, but offers the following suggestion. Mark key non-disturbed areas prior to construction. Consider having the developer mark non-disturbed areas, 50-foot wetland buffers that are in close proximity, proximity to construction activities to ensure that these areas are not accidentally disturbed during construction. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns. Respectfully submitted, Jason Brennan, Chairman of the Litchfield Conservation Commission. And then we do have...
Just a note on that, that the H.L. Turner Group was also submitted a letter, which you referred to in that letter. Yeah, should have been right with those two. And I, it concurs, the report concurs with what that letter had.
And then we do have a letter from the Health Officer Review to the Litchfield Zoning Board of Adjustment, dated June 13. Based on the request for a special exception to perform work in the Wetlands Conservation District, I have reviewed the proposed project to construct multifamily housing at 255 Dairy Road in Litchfield and have no comments to offer as the Health Officer. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns you may have. Respectfully, Jeffrey Blackwell. So those are the three folks that needed to weigh in, and that's their comment. I'm assuming you're trying to, Hollis, you're going to talk a little bit more about the GOV Environmental?
Yes, I am. Thank you. So under Section 1208.01, there are eight criteria. The first is that the proposal does not unduly restrict the flow of water. As you've heard from Jim's presentation, that in the first instance, we're fixing one culvert that exists already at the intersection there, and it's going to be, what's there now will be, and there'll be an improvement if it's allowed. The second one is replacing a nearby culvert, and so the flow of the water will be better than what it is under an out-of-date old culvert. And the third is a large box culvert, which is oversized and will not impede the flow of the water. So those are the three that might potentially, three impacts that might potentially impede the, or restrict the flow of water, and the standard is unduly restrict. B, not in conflict with any of the objectives of Section 1200.01, and those are the seven matters I covered before Jim spoke, and as I said, I believe all seven of those points are covered. We are taking good care of the environment with this application. C, the use cannot reasonably be avoided. We have two high and dry areas which are on the other side of these wetland areas that we have to get to in order to be able to utilize our land, and the only way to get to is, there's an old crossing, an old culvert, which would have allowed some sort of passage, and we're putting a better culvert in, and then we're putting a whole new facility, but it is a box culvert with a natural bottom. We need to get access, that's the... We need to get access. That's the criteria. Cannot reasonably be avoided. There's really no other way to get back there. We can't get there from, off our property. D, it's the least damaging. And I think you've heard from Jim that best management design practices are being used. There really is minimal activity in the wetland, and there really is no other way to do the crossing that we need to have. That E is the proposal is reasonable and an acceptable. Impact mitigation measures have been incorporated to avoid wetland loss. We are not proposing wetland loss other than the fact that there'll be a new concrete. I guess it's concrete, isn't it? The new natural bottom? Would be, so there'll be a new concrete structure in the wetland area. But it won't be restricting flow, and it won't really avoid, it won't cause any degradation of any existing encroachment or any degradation of upgrade wetlands. F, no significant impact on aquatic habitat or of rare or endangered species. There's a letter from GOV Environmental, which was sent to the board, to Jim, and Jim forwarded onto the board, and I believe it's in the record. But this was a, a letter from Brendan Quigley, who is with GOV Environmental Services. And his letter states that he reviewed the plans. Consider the criteria found in section twelve oh eight point oh one F, which requires that the impacts within the Wetlands Conservation District result in no significant impact on the aquatic habitat of rare or endangered species as listed by the State of New Hampshire or federal government. Wetlands on the property are primarily forested red maple swamp, located in the forested areas surrounding the fields and developed areas of the existing BAE Systems Facility. There are two streams located in the east and western parts of the site. There are no vernal pools on the site. A request was submitted to the New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau requesting they review their records of rare, threatened, or endangered species in the vicinity of the site. Their response identified records of Blanding's turtle, wood turtle, eastern hog-nosed snake, and spotted turtle. It's important to note that these species were identified as occurring nearby, but not on the site. No rare, threatened, or endangered plant species were identified in the NHB report or noted during fieldwork. In my opinion, the proposed impacts within the Wetlands Protection District will not have a significant effect on aquatic habitat of the species identified in the NHB report. This is based on the three main characteristics of the project design. Number one, the overall project layout utilizes the maintained fields, currently developed areas of the project, such that impacts the naturally vegetated buffer are very limited. Number two, direct wetland impact is limited to two wetland crossings and a very small impact to rework an existing drainage outfall. None of these impacts will occur within the higher value areas of Red Maple Swamp located south of the existing site driveway and in the northeast corner of the site, which are most likely to provide aquatic habitat to the turtle species. Number three, a large twelve-foot by six-foot open bottom box culvert has been utilized at impact area B, which involves a stream crossing. This structure will provide maximum connectivity for wildlife along the stream channel. If I can be of further assistance, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Brendan J. Quigley. But we submit that as an opinion of an expert. I think you have it.
Do have it, thank you.
So number seven criteria, or G, is adequate erosion and sediment control. Methods have been proposed. As Jim stated, this will be best management practices. We do have to, because of the size of the impact of the wetlands, we do have to get approval from NHDES, and that application is pending. And you can be sure they're gonna put us through the wringer to make sure we are indeed using best management practices. And then the final criteria, state wetland permits to be obtained if necessary. As Jim stated, we've already filed for them. And if you see fit to grant a special exception, it would obviously be conditioned upon us obtaining a state wetland permit. I think that covers our presentation this evening. If you have any questions of me or Jim, I'd be happy to answer. And obviously, if the public has any questions.
I don't have any questions, no?
The Conservation Commission letter spoke of a wetland special exception. It didn't say exceptions. There's actually two exceptions that we're going for. But it appears that they summarize the whole impact, not just the specific individual special exceptions. Would you agree with that?
Yes, our testimony is that when we presented to each of these boards, we discussed both wetlands and the flood, and the flood impacts as well. Yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Could you, I know we talked several times, the box culvert.
Sure.
Has come up, and I know that's through the stream. So that's the biggest impact to the wetlands. Could you give us more detail? What the box culvert is, how you see that effect in habitat?
Yeah.
And the water flow?
Yeah. Precast concrete, six high by twelve wide, almost like a bridge that will be assembled to allow that open flow of channel. That channel is maybe two feet deep and about six feet wide. So we've kind of overcompensated for the actual crossing. I believe it's eighty feet in length, and that will allow us to bring up the approach and the descent on the other side with proper cover for utilities to get across the stream as well. One of the things I forgot to mention in my presentation is we're crossing that stream, and it's a narrowest point. That's something that we picked up in order to minimize, you know, that impact. So in, in my opinion, this is a really good solution to not impact, as I mentioned, wildlife trespassing through there to impact the brook itself. And I don't think it will have an impact on any downstream condition, on the, the stream channel itself. And I think it's a very good solution for this location.
Does that box culvert take into it, to account the potential flooding area that you've marked on the, on the map?
Say that again, sir, I'm sorry.
Does, does that culvert on that crossing take into account the flood zone that you have marked on?
Absolutely. We'll talk a little bit about that in the next case.
Okay.
We believe we're above it, but we'll, we'll get into the details of that. And again, it's an open bottom. There's no concrete underside. And the folks in Concord, the environmentalists like that, you know, because it maintains that channel and what's happening in that water course. So I wanted to reinforce that.
And I noticed in your application, you stated the property is located within a mapped stratified drift aquifer. Could you just explain that? What is meant by that?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of areas in town that are mapped, you know, within aquifers and in great southern New Hampshire. Here, where we have municipal water to not only this site, but to a good portion of Litchfield now, I think that we can, we can say that the development, you know, by protecting eighty-four percent of the site, being eighty-four percent open space, should not adversely impact the aquifer. We're not withdrawing water for any type of use. There was a well on the property. We may use it for a portion of site irrigation, but it's not a large quantity of water. And of course, if it's irrigated, it kind of gets put back into the system. So we don't have excessive cuts or fills that may tend to, that may tend to impact an aquifer. If you had a fifty-foot cut on a site and you were into an aquifer, you could drain an aquifer. We don't have that situation here. The project works well with the land, both horizontally, but also vertically as well.
You know, the, the main purpose of protecting the aquifer in the Wetlands Conservation District is the water comes down, and if you stay out of the buffer and out of the wetlands, it's allowed to do its natural thing. But if you start building structures within it, it affects direction of where it might go. It might go outside of the aquifer. It might have, if your structure might cause contamination. That's one of the requirements I read. None of what we're doing is gonna generate contamination. It's actually gonna control and filter contamination of the accessways and allow infiltration. So that's really, we do meet that purpose and goal of protecting the aquifer.
And maintaining natural drainage patterns, too. As I said, we're working with the land. We're, we're not taking water from one watershed and piping it over to the other.
And with the eighty-three thousand square feet of buffer impact, what is the?
Let's talk about that. There's, there's about fifteen acres of fifty-foot no disturb buffer on the property. We're impacting roughly two acres of that, or roughly thirteen percent. But of that, three quarters of that thirteen percent has already been disturbed as part of the BAE system. So five percent of the, the fifteen acres is about a half an acre of new buffer impacts on a ninety-acre site. So we've tried to do our best to minimize all those values.
And restoration for those areas?
Sure. Good question. You'll notice that, you'll notice that here, we've got a twenty-four-foot roadway and a twenty-four-foot roadway. This roadway already exists because it's the current driveway. So a very small portion of the work in those areas is impervious cover. The rest is gonna be slope, but it'll be naturalized with loam and seed and a conservation mix. So, you know, of that eighty-five thousand square feet of buffer, I could do the math, but I'm gonna guess that, you know, sixty-five thousand of it, or almost three quarters of it, is gonna be naturalized in a slightly different manner, but in a non-paved manner when, when construction is complete. And when you look at a ninety-acre site, you know, those are, those are important numbers. You know, one of the things that I want to reinforce is that we're, we're not having any of these impacts for greater lot development. We, we haven't come before you this evening with, you know, four of the six-unit buildings are in disturbed buffer areas, so we can get those twenty-four units. That's not the case. In fact, we're less than what code requires.
And no parking areas are proposed to be in the buffer. They're, they're setback from the buffers.
Yes.
A little thrown off. I see the blue line going through those parking spaces, but that's not.
Right, that blue line, that's the floodway, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But that is not a buffer. That's correct.
In the areas that the Conservation Commission were speaking about, they said mark key non-disturbed areas prior to construction. Do you have any insight what they mean by key?
Yeah, no, sure. You know, we, you know, the GOV report speaks to the sensitivity of this wetland in the front here, and this one in here of being high value. And so they want those areas, both during construction and after construction, delineated with some sort of marker or post that says, you know, pretty much stay out. And that's fine. We're happy to do that. And I would also say that this is a, this is a pretty key area, too. So we'll have strategic points throughout the project. We'll have constructions in, during construction, and then post-construction as requested by the Conservation Commission, and we're fine. We're happy to do that.
And when they categorize them as key, what do they mean by key, in your opinion?
Well, I would say that, again, I lean on that GOV report. They're the expert where they talk about the areas in the front as being key, and then the areas along these sides. You know, wetlands, of course, have, have different levels of value. And so I think they view those as slightly greater than, let's say, this, you know, culvert extension here at the, the first impact area there, so.
Thank you. Have any questions?
Can I just? Can I get you just to discuss a little bit of any impacts as they tie into Hudson? From our side to Hudson, or Hudson to?
With regard to wetlands or buffer?
Yeah, well, yeah, wetlands.
So there are no, there are no wetland or buffer impacts in Hudson being proposed? We will need to, we will need to go through a Hudson Site Plan Approval Process there because we're in two towns. That's fairly common. We have a couple buildings here in Litchfield. Okay, a couple residential buildings here. But the only impact there, Jeff, is for the open bottom box culvert and the prisma fill on both sides there. So there's nothing being proposed in this location here.
Want to open it up for public input? Are there any members of the public in favor of the application who wish to speak? There are none. Are there any members of the public in opposition to the application that wish to speak? There are none. Are there any members of the public with any questions about the application that would like to ask those questions? Rocket reflect that there are none.
So the board want to hear the other application first before we do anything on that?
Do you think it?
Yeah, I think we should hold off.
If that's okay with them.
Absolutely, yeah. So the next one, the next application is for floodplain in the floodplain Conservation District, and it's regulated by section eleven hundred of the zoning ordinance. And the purpose of the floodplain Conservation District is as follows. And I'll just read it. "The floodplain Conservation District is enacted to ensure that development on land within the district will not endanger the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants of the land within the floodplain or the public during time of flood. The development will not result in increased flood levels during the base flood discharge and to encourage the most appropriate use of land within the community." So under section eleven oh three, uses are allowed. And the Zoning Board of Adjustment may grant special exception for certain uses within the special flood hazard area. And again, we had to notify the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, and they can have the opportunity to submit written comment. "The uses that are permitted are the erection of new and the enlargement of existing non-residential buildings and structures, and the alteration of the service, surface configuration of the land." And we're proposing both. As identified previously, the floodplain Conservation District on our property is this foot, if you will, outlined in blue. And we do have some activity proposed within that floodplain Conservation District. It had to be properly identified, and H.L. Turner worked with Jim of Hanors Swanson and identified the area in accordance with your ordinance. You're gonna hear a little bit more. Jim's gonna describe what's going on in there and what the issues are. Eleven oh three just allows us to come before this board and ask for a special exception. And after Jim presents, I will run through the criteria, which in, in this instance is much shorter. There are only five criteria, not fifteen, to get a special exception. So with that, I'll just pass it to Jim.
Thank you, Morgan. Our responsibility as preparers of drawings like this, professional land surveyors and civil engineers, is to identify areas that are subject or prone to flooding. And the resource that we use is the flood insurance rate map, which is prepared by FEMA, which is updated, I don't know, every ten to, ten to twenty years, depending upon the community. Here in Litchfield, the map that we included as part of our application shows something called Flood Zone A in this shape. And as mapmakers, we're responsible to represent the actual limits of that flood zone to the best of our ability, which with computer technology, we're able to get pretty good. However, there's a slight flaw, and the flaw is that the flood insurance rate maps are usually prepared with high-altitude photogrammetry. And the, many of the main water courses in our country, and I'll, I'll cite the Merrimack River as an example, is a studied water course. Where FEMA has looked at the geometry of it, they've looked at the watershed to it, they've done calculations to determine what areas are in the floodway, that carrying channel of the river, and what areas are in what's called floodplain, which are those supporting areas that are adjacent to rivers. Behind Wilson Farm Stand, something like that. I get that image of that area during peak storms, floods. That is most likely in floodplain. I don't know that for sure, so. But to me, you know, it's that supporting area where that, with that floodway crests, it will spill out into other areas. This area, and in those areas is either mapped floodway or zone AE. Not exactly sure what AE means. Not exactly sure what AE means. This map here in Litchfield represents on this watercourse Flood Zone A. And Flood Zone A is essentially FEMA saying, "Well, that area could be prone to flooding. We don't know. We didn't study it, but you know, there's a watercourse there, so we're going to shape our map to show that." And the code, Litchfield's code recognizes Zone A, and it recognizes its limitations. And what it says is, "You can work within Zone A, but you really have to hire somebody who can approximate where the flood is, and then you can determine what your impacts are." And that's really what we've done. H.L. Turner is a company based out of Concord, New Hampshire. They're an engineering team. But they are, in my opinion, the foremost authority on floods and rivers here in the state of New Hampshire. And so we hired them to evaluate our plan vis-a-vis Zone A in that location. Now Zone A, if you follow Zone A, as I mentioned earlier, that this perennial watercourse works its way around. It crosses Dairy Road just north, I think, of Lobster Boat. That's really where the studied stream ends, pretty much at 102. So everything east of 102 is approximated. That's within Zone A. And so if you took a look at the H.L. Turner study, what they did is they looked at the maps, they looked at the geometry of the watercourse and the watershed to it, approximated flow, and then said, "Well, we determined the flood to be something that's north of our particular crossing." But they also looked at our plan and said, "Because you're in it, we want to evaluate that." They looked at that open-bottom box culvert, and I think felt that that's a responsible way to traverse that particular watercourse. We do have some minor grading, and we have a small portion of a non-residential structure. It's a six-unit garage structure, and four of those units are located in Zone A. But that's okay. You can do work in Zone A as long as you can prove that you are not going to adversely impact anybody. And that's what they did. And I'll quote the concluding remarks, "That the project's minor site grading improvements and stream crossing do not quote-unquote 'encroach on the floodplain of the downstream watercourse and has no impact on the base flood elevation," which is really exactly what your code wants us to prove. And that's what we've done with that technical document. And so that's really it, Morgan, unless you want me to go back through and...
No.
...through the project again on the presentation?
I think one of the things over the years I've learned, is I learned from the experts, and one expert years ago told me, when I was trying to understand, "Well, what is it that we're looking at here?" And the presentation that he made was, not to oversimplify it, but it is the brick in the bathtub. The bathtub is the floodplain, and when you put a brick in, you can raise the water level. And in this instance, we have like a pea in a very large lake. It's that small of an impact. But the conclusion was, as Jim said, zero, no impact. So the criteria that I have to meet are, number one, the application has to be consistent with the purpose and authority. And so I'm just going to take the time again to read it. "The purpose is that it was enacted to ensure development on land within the district will not endanger the health, safety, or welfare of the occupants of the land within the floodplain or the public during a time of flood." So the development is described as this open-bottom culvert, which we're going to have, which will allow the flow to go through. And the second impact is, the second development within it is the road crossing itself. As you can see, the roadway has to go within a significant portion, but it's up and out of the floodway itself. And then the final is the garage, the non-residential structure. Just a little corner of it is nicked up there, if you will, by the calf of the foot. So those are the impacts. And none of those will endanger the health, safety, or welfare of the occupants of the land within that entire floodplain or the public during time of flood. There's still plenty of capacity. They're not really getting rid of it. Second one is that development will not result in increased flood levels. None of these improvements or proposed developments will increase the flood levels during the base flood discharge. And then finally, to encourage the most appropriate use of land within the community. Again, it sort of gets back to almost the wetland conservation district. You really shouldn't be in this area unless you absolutely have to, and you ought to have the best acceptable alternative to getting to the high and dry land which you own. And we think we've presented that. So that's the number-one criteria, consistent with the purposes. Number two, will not substantially obstruct nor divert flood flow, reduce natural floodwater storage capacity, nor increase velocity such that the water level substantially raised or danger from flooding are increased. So again, the criteria is substantial. This gets back to the brick in the bathtub, and I think the opinion by Turner covers that point. Number three, there's a safe means of escape provided if floods. Again, there's plenty of capacity out there, and the design of this crossing will allow access. Of course, in the floodplain itself, it doesn't expand over into the Hudson area, which is going to be developed, so it's really not an issue. There's going to be an ability to cross over it. They're really more concerned, if you're going to put an improvement within the floodplain, how are people going to get out when the flood comes? These improvements, the only improvement really, is this parking area. It's non-residential. Now, number four, proposed methods of drainage and sewerage are safe. We're not proposing any sewerage, and the drainage is outside that area. Number five, the use conforms with the National Flood and Codes. And again, that's covered by the Turner letter. So I think we've met those requirements. We have this evening with us the author of the letter, that I've called the Turner Letter. So if you have any questions, we have the person here, Robert Carter, to answer those questions.
Questions?
Nope.
Anybody want to take a look at the report? Actually, Jeff, I'm going to ask you a question. I noticed in this section, there's a lot that you'll be weighing in on for the building, maybe for the garage. Do you have any involvement with this, for the code?
For...
For the construction? I'd like to make sure that it meets all the requirements that it needs to.
Oh, yes. Yeah, well...
It says like 1106.02. "In addition, any new construction or substantial improvement within the A and A&E zones as determined by the court enforcement officers shall meet the following criteria." And then there's all stuff listed in there.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have any of those issues.
Okay.
Because we're talking about parking.
And just the garage.
Yeah, and a garage which, again, doesn't have a basement, so those types of issues.
But you'll be just regulating that, just in case?
Yep. Yes, I will.
You know that we have this map, too, that talks about the Chase Brook watershed. Does that play, come into play at all, do you know, for this project? Or Jim, do you know if that comes into play at all?
Chase Brook watershed.
Yep.
And so you can see, we're in the southeast corner of the project, so our site is tributary, or is within the watershed of Chase Brook right now.
Right. Okay.
As I mentioned, the two watercourses on our site, they run offsite. Each independently crosses Dairy Road, and then they merge on the west side of, somewhere on the west side of Dairy Road, and form Chase Brook, yeah. Just to give you a sense of the mapping, from this location here, this grade rises up probably fifteen feet. You know, so you wouldn't think an unmapped wetland would also rise fifteen feet. You know, floods are usually fairly consistent with the elevations that they flood to. So, but that's okay. You know, they're a good tool to have to check, and it's better safe than sorry. And that's why we had to run through the study the way we did.
Jeff, we didn't get separate opinions from the cons comm or anybody else?
It's no, it's not a, it's not part of the special exception.
Right, but that's...
Right, correct.
They didn't weigh in or do anything.
Right.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
I'm good. The presentation probably went very well.
I'm going to open it up for public input for the second special exception. Is there any members of the public here in favor of the application that would like to speak? There are none. Are there any members of the public in opposition to the application that would like to speak? There are none. Are there any members of the public that have questions or concerns? All right. So am I going to bring it back to the board? Anything else, Attorney Hollis?
No, thank you.
I'll make a motion to oppose public input.
May I second the motion?
Oh, Peter?
Aye.
All right, so we are going to deliberate on those two applications. Comments, concerns, questions?
So I did all the homework, and I realized, as an architect, I'm sure glad I have the phone number of a civil engineer. So the only, and you touched on it, too, was this key areas. And I've been on enough construction sites where they all, you all go, the trucks, you know, the tractors show up, and they just start taking stuff down. They go, and so I don't, I guess I don't, I guess my question there is, couldn't we just do all, identify all the areas, just so it's, you know, and maybe go as far as, you know, you're onsite in pre-construction meetings and things like... Like, I just think it's, I've just seen too many things where people get excited, and they want, they go, "Let's go knock this project out," and...
Well, the good news is, the owner has been doing their own construction. And so I think we can coordinate with the building inspector to whatever you would require. Probably be phased, and we can move those signs along as construction moves along.
That's kind of, just to make sure, because things get active on a site, and things happen, and someone gets turned around, east becomes west, and next thing you know, we got a problem, so.
I know the town of Londonderry has Conservation Commission signs that they put up like every fifty feet, so people know not to...
Right, right.
...and those are prominent.
It's easy to do. You're on, I mean, I've seen it enough times.
We can clearly stake it and identify it so that it's...
In going through all of that, I think it's all presented well. It's all backed up well. You know, I did have a couple of questions. They were answered in the presentation. And I keyed in on that. I said, "Yeah, let's make sure we identify this." Not because I don't think they're going to do anything intentionally. I didn't even mention it.
If I may, Madam Chair, that on a project like this, it's likely a four-year project. And it'll be built in phases, and as a phase, will be complete, you know, while others are still under construction. My suggestion would be to use orange construction fencing during construction, because that's a clear, visible, "Do not come into this area." And then, post-construction, to use some sort of more permanent marker. I'm not a big fan of the fifty feet, every fifty feet, because they look like kind of golf course out-of-bound stakes, you know? Nothing could look more unnatural than that. But to have them every hundred or hundred-and-fifty feet, or a judicious use of permanent markers post-construction, our client would be fine with that.
Yeah, I was leaning towards the orange construction fence.
Sure.
But I didn't think it was my, to add to that. But if that, I mean, I'm not going to require that, but that would definitely...
We will offer that. How's that?
Yeah. That satisfies any concern I would have from a overzealous, heavy-equipment operator.
Any other concerns?
No.
Any concerns about maintenance and operation for that box culvert? Because this is going to be private, not with the public.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is going to be a private road, so the town's not going to be maintaining the culvert. And typically, there's an operation and maintenance plan for something like this, which we can...
Yeah, I guess we maintain, obviously, it's open bottom, so you're going to, silts can develop, and as that six-foot starts to shrink, there's some sort of, I guess, sustainment of the culvert then? That's established, or...
There is. I think it's mostly common sense. It's visual inspections. You know, I think we have the benefit here of the developers, the builder, who's going to be the owner. And so I think we have, are in a good position to say that it'll be properly maintained, and that, you know, we can represent on our planning board plans a certain protocol for... Actually, our plans currently do include inspection and maintenance of all stormwater features, and I would suggest that this would be part of it, you know, a culvert, sure.
So I would like, if the board's inclined, to make sure that we do have certain conditions. And those conditions would be the orange construction, the fencing during construction, the permanent markers of...
Post-construction.
Post-construction. Now, the question is, we don't regulate that as a town, so if the board's inclined to do that, what would they be? And where would they be? So that would be that. And the third is, I would feel more comfortable having a condition for an operation, maintenance, and inspection plan for that culvert, especially as it relates to Chase Brook and the floodplain. It's important for us to make sure that that's properly maintained.
Right, right.
So those would be my three concerns that, if the board's inclined, that I would want to make sure we have as conditions. So if the board's agreeable to those conditions, what, so the one that has the most questions would be the permanent markers. What are they? What should they say? Where do we want them? And do we want them, I mean, there's, you know, impacts throughout the site. Where would we want those? Do we want them everywhere? I think everywhere is a lot, this...
Maybe we could leverage the Conservation Commission to assist in the setting up of the markers. I think that would be a beneficial way to find a happy medium between, you know, having overzealous markings and enough to make it adequate for the folks that live there.
So what are you thinking as far as a condition, then, for those permanent markers? For us, just to say, we're kicking it back to the Conservation Commission?
That we would expect them to work with the Conservation Commission for setting up of markers, permanent markers. We don't have to define what they are, but the fact that we are trying to stipulate that means that some sort of markings will occur, and the Conservation Commission, we can assist with how they're set up.
If I might, Madam Chair, I might suggest you could just add the language that the Conservation Commission has suggested, and then add the words "key areas" to be defined by Conservation Commission.
That's actually a good idea.
That way, we've put in the condition, and we've, we now have to have them identify the key areas. We don't mind working with them.
I think they'd be happy to work with you with this one. The box culvert, by the way, is the least impacted to that water flow. So the only thing is, you want to, you know, look in ten, twenty years, that they keep an eye on and make sure that it doesn't just fill up. And that's to their own benefit of that area. So the risk and concern is less for me because they're going box culvert.
Okay.
Right, but we'd have a condition. It would be sustained and maintained, and it's full capacity.
Yeah, you look for, you look for erosion, you look for beaver activity, you know?
That's for sure.
Yeah, so that's, that would be fine, yeah.
So the first one would be orange construction, fencing, not all wetlands during the...
Yeah, and what you're saying, too, is you knew it in phases. And what you're saying, too, is you knew it in phases, you're not gonna have to do all the, you're gonna move that fencing around as you work. So I think that's reasonable, a reasonable ask.
We hate the word "all." I would say wetlands that are adjacent to construction activity.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And we'll do, you know, for instance, in phase one, you know, we'll get it good, we'll get it all around there, but there's, where there's areas where there's wetlands in the woods that aren't being touched, it makes no sense to do that.
Right.
I have orange construction fencing shall be erected during construction activity that occurs adjacent to wetlands. Permanent conservation markers shall be installed at key non-disturbed areas in consultation with the Conservation Commission. Three, an operation and maintenance plan for the culvert, and I'm trying to, there's only one culvert, right? So we don't need to identify, for the box culvert. An operation, maintenance, and inspection plan for the box culvert shall be prepared and submitted as part of the planning board application for approval.
Yes, sounds good.
But that would be then tied to the permit, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, well, be tied, right.
Yeah.
To the planning board approval.
Yeah, the planning board would attach that to the, and so it would be requirement of the permit.
Okay.
So that would be something I would be checking.
Passed on, yeah.
Yeah.
So those would be conditions on both of the special exceptions.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that kind of covers both of them, yeah.
Do you want me to make it the motion? Because I didn't...
Did you got it written down?
So I would like to make a motion in case number 06192023-1, a special exception from LZO Article 1200, Wetlands Conservation District, Section 1208, to construct streets, roadways, and other accessways and utility right-of-way easements within the Wetland Conservation District. Owner and applicant 255 Dairy Road LLC, location of the property 255 Dairy Road, Litchfield, New Hampshire, map 2 La 8, to grant the request for a special exception with the following conditions. One, orange construction fencing shall be erected during construction activity that occurs adjacent to wetlands. Two, permanent conservation markers shall be installed at key non-disturbed areas in consultation with the Conservation Commission. Three, an operation, maintenance, and inspection plan for the culvert shall be presented to the planning board and approved by the planning board as part of the site plan approval process.
Is that the box culvert?
Box culvert, yep.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All aye opposed? That passes 300. The second case was case number 06192023-2, a special exception from LZO Article 1100, floodplain conservation district, Section 1103A, for the erection of new residential buildings and structures and the alteration of the surface configuration of land within the Wetland Conservation District. I'd like to make a motion to grant that request as presented, so it's as they present it here, with the following conditions. One, orange construction fences shall be erected during construction activities that occurs adjacent to the wetlands. Two, permanent conservation markers shall be installed at key non-disturbed areas in consultation with the Conservation Commission. And three, an operation, maintenance, and inspection plan for the box culvert shall be presented to the planning board and approved by the planning board as part of the site plan approval process. So I added like, just as presented in that one.
I second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. This was a, a lot of time I have to do, a lot of homework and research. This was, everything was presented. I appreciate the great presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, a path across on the other side. Divine Millamette? Suzanne Brunel? Yeah, so it's good.
Tell her hi. Tell her hi.
I will. Did you say sue?
Yeah. Have a nice night.
Do you have any other?
Good night, now.
No, that was yours, right? So I'm gonna put, this is here, this goes in here.
These are my copies. Is it okay if I keep these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is mine.
Do we have any other business?
Any other business?
Meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes, yes. So we have the meeting minutes of the February.
February, that's right.
Did everybody have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, amendments on those?
Nope.
The only thing that I did notice was that we didn't have who seconded the motion when it was approved for the one case that we had. If you could just double-check that, and just add in whoever seconded the motion, because I think by statute, we need to put the motion who made it, who seconded it, and then, that's the only thing that I noticed. So if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the February meeting minutes as amended...
I'll make that motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So those are passed, and thank you for doing those minutes. Thank you. And I know, Jerry, you were appointed. Did Kim get back to you about serving on that?
I checked. I didn't see any email. I never go to my literal email. I always say, oh, yeah, I gotta get back to, I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay. Well, but she has the email, so you're, you're good to go.
Yeah, I volunteered for it.
So thank you for that. And we are still down alternates in members, so we can, for that. And we do have our budget session coming up, August 28th, for the ZB budget.
I'm generally ready.
And I think we're at 2,300 for budgets.
Uh-uh.
I don't see us needing an increase in the budget. What I would like members to do, though, and try to get more, is to go to some more N/A training, if that comes up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I missed it.
Always beneficial for the board as well. And they do have stuff on their website for free. And we're a member, right, for that as well?
Yes.
So we can get access to some of those pre-recorded videos, which are helpful.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. In our next meeting, we do have a case, right? July 17?
Yes.
Okay.